Right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. If you haven't already, please silence your cell phones. When we come to the agenda items, I will read them. And if you have that business before the council, please come to the podium and state your name. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session, Monday, August 12th, 2024, 6:00 PM. Anamosa Library and Learning Center. 1.0 roll call.
From?
Here.
Dan Smith?
Here.
Case Smith?
Wymer?
Here.
Dumber?
Here.
Five of six members are present in chambers. It will take three favorable votes to move the motion. 2.0 pledge of allegiance. 3.0 Consent Agenda Review and Approve. I will read the three items. Council at that time has the choice to make a motion that includes consent, which will bring all the items to vote, or they can make a motion on any of the individual items. Item A, minutes from July 22nd, 2024, regular session. Item B, current bills. Item C, Noisy Street Closure Permit Application.
All second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. At this time, for council, we'll open up for any discussion on the three items.
I have a question on four different expenses under Police Department, we had a mowing nuisance property of expense of $381.60. What do we do with regard to that? Is that then we attempt to collect that from the property owner, or how do we go about collecting those fees?
Uh, once it gets to City Hall, I don't know what happens to it. I'll be honest about that. Um, per ordinance, what it says is that we will charge the homeowner what Mingers charges us to mow, and then there's an administrative fee of, I think, $25. Um, and I don't remember that bill specifically. I don't remember how many properties that covers.
Okay. So, once it gets to City Hall, then what do we do to make sure that we're following up to keep to collect that money if at all possible?
Yep. Then after that, uh, we attempt to assess the property owner, um, for those nuisance-related expenses. Yes.
Property.
Yes, correct.
Um, the next one, thank you. Next one I had was under the solid waste. I see we had landfill assessments and fees of $5,279.50. It's how? What does that bill cover? Is that like a semi-annual?
Um, it is periodic. Unfortunately, Penny's not here tonight. I don't know how often it does occur, but it is a periodic bill from that. Yes.
Then under fire service, there was a $805.86 truck for service there with repair bill for? What was that expensive? Thanks.
Uh, that was for one of our trucks to get its yearly service, uh, oil filters, oil change, air filters.
So that's, that's just?
It's an annual.
Yep.
Hey there, man. Yeah, I have a question. What was the Delancey electric bill for $3,000 for combine generators?
So when the addition was built, uh, we had a new generator installed. And that part of the bid, that generator was supposed to feed just the addition. And we had a smaller, older generator that feeded or fed the old part of the fire station. We combined all the electrical on the old generator onto the new generator, so it's just one generator servicing the whole fire station. So it's something that we've talked about over the past couple of years, and then.
What'd you do with the old generator?
It's still sitting right there. It's still sitting there for now. That's on my list of stuff to talk to Jeremiah at some point of what to do with it. So I think the generators are at least 16, 18 years old, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Dan, obviously that new one has the capacity to cover everything.
Yes.
Why would we have gone so big if we thought they would be separated just for future growth in a sense, or?
Yeah, I don't have no clue. I was thinking that they designed it, so. I can't.
That's a very fair statement.
And then I do have a question. Steve, can you tell me what the, uh, I just lost it. It's for software contract for $7,516?
That's Tyler. That's the accounting or the water wastewater billing software.
Cause the water department had the same charge as wastewater did.
Total about $20,000.
So is this a new system, Jeremiah, or?
No, it's, um, split between City Hall and, um, Public Utilities as a combined expense.
Well, it was installed what, three years ago? Maybe four.
Yeah, four, yeah.
So it may be new from when you were here, Dan. Okay. I was just curious about it. I'd seen it and I was like, yeah, thank you.
So one other question I had for Aqua Core says that we have a cool vacuum for $11,843.30. Is that a new vacuum or what? What is?
That is a new vacuum. So our previous vacuum decided to stop working on us, and it was more or less an emergency purchase because we can't have that stress on our pump room and spending upwards of $20, $30,000 to replace that.
So so this vacuum then I know that later on in the meeting, we'll be having kind of a discussion about future plans of the pool. What is the? If you have an idea, what's the expected life on this new? Is this gonna be a cool vacuum that can be used?
Yes, it has a 12-year warranty on it, and we're projecting the pool to last at least until 29, so it'll carry over for a couple of years after that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Those are the ones I get questions.
Is there any other questions on the bills, minutes, or, uh, the requested permit?
I do have a question on the, uh, street closures. I noticed one of the street closures was for the corner of Lynn, and I believe the county road heading out of town for Pumpkin Fest weekend.
So that's actually for, I submitted like everything the rest of the year. That's actually for the reindeer run.
Okay.
The 5K participants will run out on the trail out that way.
Well, my question is, can we legally close that? Cause isn't that in the county?
Uh, you're talking Shaw Road?
Yeah.
I don't know the legal, but I know the entrance onto Shaw Road is city.
Well, I was looking at.
Close that in a sense, but I don't know.
Well, well, because I was looking at Beacon today and it made it look like it was county.
The very entrance?
Yeah, because south or kind of west of the fire station on to, to that corner is county. That is not within city limits.
It wasn't until you got to that next.
Well, the, the next property over is in city limits, but it made it look like that intersection was county, so I didn't know if we could legally close it.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. So I would just say the last two years that that has been closed.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there.
So I'm just asking about that.
Well, we do have the motion on the floor and second. I guess without any stipulations. It has been done in the past, but I guess you can say that doesn't make it right. Doing things for 20 years wrong is still wrong. Do we want to pull that out? Do we want to get clarification?
Well, I think I'd just soon leave it in, but you may want to approach the county then too, just to make sure with them, but.
I think that's fair enough. Uh, does the public have any questions on these three items? Haley, will you, uh, conduct a roll vote for the motion?
Yes.
Dumber?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Case Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. 4.0 public hearings, none. 5.0 proclamations, none. 6.0 postponed items, none. 7.0 council action items. 7.1 project status update, HR Green.
Uh, we have one additional, uh, under 7.6. It covers the Third Street Sidewalk Project. Um, plan to just have a little more discussion on that uh, under that agenda item. Otherwise, uh, I don't have any specific comment on the rest of this. This was submitted by HR Green. It's in your council packets. It just kind of gives an overview of, uh, several of the projects ongoing.
Also, the, uh, I guess that update report was in your packet. I did a chance to look it over. Do you have any questions, uh, that Jeremiah would need to take back to HR Green?
So under 7.1, then there was the discussion or there was indication that there might need to be some changes to ordinances or what fiscal year we put it under?
I believe you're talking about the sidewalk program again.
Sidewalk. That, I mean, that was part of the packet anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, need to do anything with that today, or are we gonna wait?
We don't need to necessarily. This, the sidewalk program, essentially there's a separation between Third Street Sidewalk slash Trail, uh, project, and then the sidewalk program is more of a comprehensive overview of all the city's sidewalks. Um, that was placed on hold here, I don't know, just before budget time approximately. Um, the HR Green is recommending that we do reassess the city sidewalk ordinances and potentially, um, modify those, uh, to fit this program. Uh, so that has not been done, but it will have to be a discussion before we proceed with this.
And then you had mentioned that the 7.6 on the agenda, is that something we're gonna wait to discuss, or are we taking care of that?
Um, I, I just put this on there as a separate, uh, item. This, this of course is just an overview of what's been done, uh, to date through HR Green. Item 7.6 is more of a specific discussion about some options that go along with this.
So we're gonna do that. That's okay.
Is there any, uh, project status being held, held up because of city tying up loose ends, or are we still on?
Um, not necessarily. The, uh, sewer and alley project between Ford and Huber. Uh, we are currently still working through the, uh, acquisition and easement process for that, so I guess technically, yes, that is still on the city's side of things. Um, and then the other ones on hold are just more of a budgetary, uh, issue.
So that, that has been delayed for a rather lengthy period of time. What, what are the hurdles we're seeing? Are we just not getting the engagement from the, the property owners? Where's all the heartburn lying?
I think we ran into a couple of issues, at least from our perspective, what we're seeing at City Hall. I know we've had a few, uh, select citizens that have come in. They signed the first go-around when we first started this. Um, we had to change those legal documents, of course, because the dates were not correct or had a sunset date on them. So we had to redo all those documents. Um, some of what we're finding is they didn't realize they had to sign a second time on the new documents, and so I have talked to a few citizens. They said they just threw it away because they thought they already took care of it. Um, other than that, yes, there is a couple of, um, I guess what I would call holdouts. Uh, citizens who still have questions or are looking for some answers from either the city or HR Green. We're trying to work through that process as we encounter them.
So Jeremiah, on that note, have we talked about how we're gonna pay for this project and when?
Uh, yeah, so that project is kind of a, um, that was one of them that was budgeted partially. We, we, just the timing of it, we thought was gonna fall over fiscal year, so we budgeted for a portion this fiscal year. Uh, presuming that the next fiscal year it'll be finished up. Um, so we kind of split fiscal years with that. And that, uh, that half of it, roughly half of it was included in the budget for fiscal '25.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing else for that? Do we?
Yes, I'm not sure where in the agenda we're supposed to bring this up. I'm gonna bring it up and under item number seven, under the report, the ever-popular Dillon Military Bridge, you know, bring that up, but we have to do something. As we're also gonna be approving or potentially approving payment, I, that I, I feel that we have another entity that should bear some responsibility, but we haven't gotten any traction with that, so I don't know what the answer is, but I'm gonna, I'll be unpopular tonight if I have to be, but we need to do something because the bridge is gonna end up in the water itself.
Um, probably the best response I have for that is kind of a two-part response. Um, we are still awaiting a technical report, um, to determine the options moving forward. Uh, we did get the preliminary bridge inspection report back, which showed about what we thought it would. Uh, the bridge is, been determined by Majeski and Masters, uh, that it should remain closed for safety reasons. Um, and so we're awaiting the technical report that's gonna show us different options on how to proceed moving forward. Uh, regarding the other portion, the payment portion or the funding of it, um, that portion, we're currently speaking to the city attorneys on how to proceed with that.
Not to speak ill of my own profession, but as near as I can see, we got lucky last year that someone at the other end didn't catch a timely timeliness requirement, so we lucked out and have another group that should have some responsibility that has declined to take their responsibility. My concern is that they're not gonna miss that deadline this year. If we don't get something going, at least to put them on notice that we still have some expectation. I don't want to be sitting here a year from now going, we're holding the bag for every I think that just from my standpoint, I want to make sure that we are engaging our legal counsel. And I just have concerns that we could be not us as a group, but the can keeps getting kicked down, and eventually we're gonna get to January 1st of 2025, and there's gonna be a notice sent to us saying, hey, guess what? We're out altogether and I don't want to be the one sitting on this, at this table saying, wow, we had a full year before that we got kind of by the grace of God, so to speak. I don't want to be sitting here a year from now going, we have no action, and we're gonna eat the entire cost of what's anybody I think that is legitimately honest about it, knows that that bridge at some point is going to end up in the river. We know who's gonna get stuck holding the bag if we don't have some definition of who actually is responsible for what. So I guess I'm bringing it up because I want to be sure, and I'm gonna ask it at every meeting, because I want our legal counsel to be prepared well enough ahead of time to get something going so that we can have some authority say, yep, you're all responsible for it totally, or you're equally responsible. We, we've gotta get some answer.
Well, and I agree with that, but I think we've got an extra year because I think that was a two-year agreement.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
So I think we've got until 2026, but that doesn't mean we can sit back and wait.
As time goes by, several things occur. We got a break because they didn't catch it last year. So there is, I think we're okay, though sort of. I don't practice this kind of law, but I know enough to be dangerous, number one. Number two, we also know that the cost today is gonna be much less today than it's gonna be two years from now, whether we get stuck holding the whole cost or half the cost. But when we come up to approve a bill later tonight, I have a feeling I know how that's gonna go, and I'm okay with it tonight, but moving forward, I think that we have another entity that needs to we need to know whether they've got any skin in the game or not. They've told us once they're, they're not interested.
Well, I, I agree with that, Todd, and I really do, um, because they've made their, their plan pretty, pretty evident.
Correct, and I just don't want to be we're on notice, and as long as, as long as everybody understands, I'm gonna, I am gonna keep bringing it up, even if it's unpopular, because I don't want to be sitting here trying to explain to the general citizenry a year from now that, hey, guess what? We got stuck with the old bill and we didn't do anything about it. And I think we're all on board with that, but I just want to make sure that I'll harp on it. Fair warning to everybody.
Well, and with that being said, you know, that's something that's the citizens who elect those officials should be putting some pressure on them because it is putting pressure on citizens of Anamosa's tax dollars.
Absolutely, and I think we're all concerned about that, particularly because we already know that our city budget, we've been working hard to kind of make sure that that city budget is being scrutinized pretty closely because we don't have a lot of I echo those same sentiments.
Well, the, the second party that is involved on this project, they, they opted not to participate in the inspections, investigation of the, the status of the bridge. Uh, but I, I don't think they've at least my impression is that they are not saying they won't be involved with the best viable option. And we all know it's gonna be driven by cost. Uh, but just remember that they didn't want to be involved in, in any expenditure of the investigation, the inspection. But they left it open, in my opinion, that they would be, they could possibly be or would be involved after those reports and were made available. And if I, maybe I'm missing it?
I, I'm not suggesting that you have that interpretation incorrect, what I my, my recollection of being present at that particular meeting was yep, they were taking a wait-and-see approach, but they were pretty inclined to let the city there was a little bit of say punishment, I guess, but there was a suggestion that their participation in payment of the preliminary studies, they were declining that opportunity because they did not feel that we properly involved them in that process. So when we get to the point of discussing the bill for the preliminary study that is coming up tonight, I fully expect that there will be no participation from them in that particular bill. That ship has kind of sailed. But moving forward, I did not feel that there was a great deal of commitment that once that study was done, they were inclined to do much of anything else. And so my feeling is I just want to keep it in the public discourse so that as we move forward, this particular meeting should serve as, I guess, notice that we haven't forgotten about the potential for participation.
Because I think the other part is, okay, we'll forget about it long enough, it will collapse, and then
You know, they'll serve notice on time the next time. My thing, I, my thought process on this is maybe we should form joint committee so they can't say they were not informed of anything at any step of the top point in time in this process. And if we have a joint committee of two of their members, two of our members, um, city administrator and whatever, then they can't at any point say we were not, we were not updated.
I'm, I would like to have some cooperation from both sides. It seems reasonable because it's not just the people of Anamosa proper that benefit from that particular bridge, although it is located in part on Anamosa city property, but there's a whole group of other people that enjoy the benefit of that bridge when it is accessible, that are not just citizens of Anamosa. So it would seem to me that there would be some level of buy-in from the community outside of it.
I, I still wish there was some kind of agreement with the state because it goes to a beautiful state park. I was down there this weekend. And they have to have some skin in this game too, at some point in time, whether we go through handicap fishing. There's lots of options. We've talked about here. We've talked about the historic bridges down in Winterset. There's, I think there's some options that we can save that bridge. That's my personal thought. Because it's history of Anamosa. It's history of the county. And it's actually history to the state of Iowa. If you think about it. And it's easy to say, oh, it's gonna cost too much to fix it. But think of the people that have driven across that bridge through the year. People have fished off that bridge. I mean, there's a lot of history there to, my own opinion, scrap it. And the county can't ignore it, the state can't ignore it, and we sure can't ignore it.
Well, I, I guess, probably just prior to moving on, I definitely think council, your reservations on this are, are warranted. Don't, don't take that wrong at all. There's nothing else. I'm gonna move to 7.2. 7.2 Resolution 2024-40, approving the plans and specifications, authorizing the bid letting, and setting the date for the public hearing for the flow equalization improvement project.
Uh, the council is okay with it. I have had a request to table this. Um, Snyder was not able to make it tonight to answer some technical questions. Um, it's completely up to the council to make a motion to table this or not. Um, but I can say I, I don't think I have the technical answers. I don't think I have the technical answers that you might have questions to.
I'll make the motion to table it.
I'll second.
Motion by Dan, second by Rich, to table this meeting.
Will they be here at the next meeting then, or what's the plan?
I'm going to ask.
Okay.
We can just table this until their availability. Council discussion on that motion. Public comment. Kaylee, will you please conduct a roll vote?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried seven point three, resolution twenty twenty four dash forty one. To hire and set the wages for the position of part-time LCC personnel for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Todd, council discussion. Public comment. Kaylee?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried seven point four, resolution twenty twenty four dash forty one. We got two forty ones there, Jeremiah.
Uh, I will fix that.
To hire and set wages for the position of part-time LCC personnel for fiscal year ending. June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. She by K.
Second.
Second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment. Kaylee?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried seven point five, resolution twenty twenty four dash forty two. To hire and set the wages for the position of full-time streets department labor for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
That should actually be twenty twenty four, forty three. It says about a resolution, but.
What will this take the street department? Employees up to.
Shane, round street superintendent, that'll put us at five, full time. Counting me. Right now I have enough to fill the dump trucks, but if somebody goes on vacation or gets sick, I won't have anybody.
Oh, how many part-time people you got?
One, well, two, I'm sorry, I have a spring, spring and summer help, and then I have Chuck Barnes still.
What kind of hours those guys work?
Uh, Chuck works seven to noon. And, uh, Walker, he starts in July and June and works through the first of September.
And is there a possibility that you could get more inmates?
Well, yeah, but I still have to drive them around. They can't drive any vehicles. Uh, any trucks, no dump trucks, uh, they could maybe drive an end loader and a skid loader and a lawnmower. But other than that, then you still got to keep eyes on them. And right now, I'm going into fall and one just went home, is going home tomorrow. So I'm not gonna get another one because they're struggling at the pen to get more, so. And they need people inside to do their work too, so we're. I wasn't gonna get a second one.
So, so what does this job actually entail? I, I'm, I'm asking a question like, what, what is the position?
Yep, so he'll mow, he'll trim trees, he'll, uh, fix streets, they'll paint. They'll drive dump truck, they're gonna, uh, probably change oil in vehicles. Um, we do service the police cars and the LCC vehicles, lawnmowers, um. We do our own, you know, we do a lot of maintenance on all the equipment, um. If the library needs something, we bring guys down here, uh, we do need to do work at the. At the PD sometimes in city hall. We stay really busy, uh, well, we're taking bleachers apart right now and rebuilding them for the LCC. Um, we just have a, a lot of stuff on our plate, change lights on Main Street, unroll the flags, pick up the trash. Um, that's a full-time job, picking up everybody's trash.
Well, I, I've done a little looking into this, Shane, and the thing that kind of bothers me with this is. We had two full-time water people. Two people at the wastewater plant. And four people at the street department. This has been years ago. And we had two part-time guys there that were just summer help and they did all the mowing.
Well, the inmates and the other guys have done a lot of the mowing. I haven't even been on a mower much. I think under a handful of times because I have building permits and we have. Locates now are just unreal twenty-six yesterday. Twenty-six.
Well, that, that's another question I have for all you department heads.
We're, I'm.
You're doing locates.
I'm putting it on other people to do locates.
You're doing locates in your department. We're doing locates in the water and wastewater department too, right? Why can't you combine that to one position? One person goes out and locates your storms and everything and also water and wastewater. And you don't have three people running around town, the wear and tear on three do. And we have to be financial responsibility to people.
Yes, I understand that, Dan, but we also have thirty-seven miles of streets and alleys.
I know.
And we've been, and I've been here for, since seventeen, and you had four people at the sewer department when I got here. And they, and, uh, Greg had five at the water department or at, at streets. And the water had three, and if they have a water main break or a sewer main break, I have nobody to help me. So that means if one guy gets sick, I only have three guys in a dump truck. And, and listen to this, so when I started here, if four guys in a dump trucks. It would take us eight hours to pull out snow. And I would be in a tonner doing most of the alleys, maybe help from water department. Could come down and help us when they were done doing rounds. We got it down from eight hours. If the snow had stopped, we can do it in four and a half.
Well, in, in just the last four years, we have had very mild winters.
We have, but doesn't mean that.
You guys do when we're not having snow.
We rebuild signs, um, all the road closed signs got to be rebuilt. We're doing maintenance on lawnmowers for the end of the year. We run around and we pick up trash and we pick up dead animals and, uh, you can't believe how many signs get hit in this town. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying that you need that extra guy for helping. It's been a struggle all summer. I feel like I'm behind the ball and the boat's going backwards. Normally this year, this time last year, we were caught up and had things looking really nice. I'm struggling because I'm trying to run a weed eater while those guys are mowing, plus doing. We have all the, um, inspections and work orders and all that has to go across my desk now. I'm in my office more now than I have ever been in the four years I've been, or five years I've been, six. I've been at my desk. So that takes me out of the equation. Because I'm having to make phone calls about somebody's tree dropped a limb, when we're going to pick that up or. Who's going to be there to fix a sign that got knocked over? I'm out of the equation, so you got four guys. I mean, it's been five guys to help everybody else. The person we're replacing was in the shop doing maintenance. I got a guy now that's in the shop trying to do maintenance, so you take him out, we're down to three guys trying to do everything. And an inmate has to be with somebody or you have to have eyes on him. And so there, he's either with somebody or he's out on a mower or he's shoveling. Or weed eating, but you still got to have somebody drive around and find him. You know, you can send him, I could send him out to the roundabout, he'll be there for four hours, but you still gotta. In that four hours, you still have to go find him in two, every two hours or every, yeah. The inmates are great and they're great extra help, but you gotta have eyes on them and they can't drive any vehicles. They go over thirty mile an hour.
So, this is. Soon before you brought the proposal for the request before the council, you looked at your budget because we just started your budget.
Yep.
So. You got, theoretically, you got the most money you're going to have in your budget right now.
I, I planned for this person. And this amount of wage, because the other guy that left medically had to retire. Was there a little more? I don't remember, do you, Jeremiah?
Um, no, it was, I mean, it, it's a, yeah, I would have to check the system, but essentially it's just a position that. Is filled, so it just, he's moving into that position. Yeah.
Moving in at the rate that the employee just left is moving in at.
Would have been, would have been.
When they come in the, like a lower entry level.
No, we, we, it's a pay based on classification, so. Uh, there's been some talk, the police department is the only one that has longevity pay, otherwise, um. Whether you've been there for thirty years or three years, you're required to do the same job and you get paid the same for whatever position that you fill.
With this particular person you're talking about, Shane, is there any kind of additional? Training that is going to have to go on or additional certifications that are going to go on to be able to do any of the?
Nope, he's got it all.
The right club.
He's got everything that we want, yep. He's going to come in with what Spencer's got, what I've got. What Stephen, well, not them guys, because they gotta have water and sewer, but he's got, he's got a CDL class A. He's got motivation and. I think he's going to do a great job.
So how many people did you have apply for this position?
Was there ten?
Ten essentially that we narrowed down to originally, there was, um, twenty-seven. That applied total through like indeed dot com, um.
But they didn't all follow the directions.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, pretty standard, but, uh, ten individuals that. Um, submitted all the required materials, uh, and then I believe we had four, five. But we attempted to know, uh, contact five of those individuals, had four interviews.
So if we approve this. And assume that everybody else. That already works there is going to be there in another year. Are you going to then consider yourself fully staffed?
Yes. Then I would be fully staffed.
Was this actually fill, filling a vacated position?
Yes.
But one time you had six full-time employees, including yourself.
No, it, it's five only.
Then you stayed earlier, you currently have five full-time employees, including you.
Positions.
Oh, I, I asked what this would make and he said this. Including himself.
So this, yeah, the streets department is authorized for seven total employees, five full-time, two part-time. They're currently at four full-time, one part-time, not including the seasonal.
So if person that. This person taking place had stayed on.
We would not be doing this.
But that party had. Budget submission for this year, you would have been. Already budgeted for the person that now has left the position.
Right.
That they were, and I'm sure I got this wrong, but they were making more per hour than this person's going to make or they're, they're making the same.
Same.
So it's not going to. Increase your budget that's already been submitted.
Right.
How many more hours a day do you suppose you spend on those building permits and stuff, paperwork? I'm, I'm just curious.
Probably two hours.
I believe it.
Because you got to drive around and then you got to call them, then you got to follow up with them if there's, you know. And sometimes it's more than that. Just like today, a sidewalk, instead of a, a ten-minute thing, I had to drive out there, I had to look at it. Had to drive back, got stopped by somebody else that was upset about something, so you lost forty-five minutes. You know, I mean, it's every, it's not that somebody's mad all the time, they just want an answer, a question, and you're gonna. Have to add, I mean. And then this morning I spent, uh, twenty-five minutes on the phone with, um, a guy to set a headstone. So that, it takes a lot of time out of my day. And then, you know, one trip to city hall to get building permits, the bills, it's. It's not, I'd love to be out there every day with them and I hate being in that office every day. But I just have to set myself to the grains and. Sit there.
Welcome to a supervisor.
Yep, 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 I know, but. It just takes me away from going out and maybe checking the lights or this and that that I do. I come in early lots of mornings, run around and make sure all the lights work. If they don't, we have to go out and fix them, you know, we, there's, there's a lot of adjustability at my, in our shop. I can say you're coming in to mow tomorrow. You get there at seven o'clock and we got a dead animal here, we got a light out over here and then everybody goes in their directions.
I keep going back to the fact that we sat here in this council and we talked during budget. That we need to figure out ways to save money because you're not just talking about a wage, you're talking about benefits, right?
Yep, that the same guy had that left.
That's fine, I understand that, but we keep talking about this. And we really don't do any action as far as reducing our costs as a city.
I think two valid points that I think need to be brought up. First, there's a cost benefit that has to go along with it at some point. Cutting money is not cutting money, it's going to cost us more money, um. Uh, I think just the bottom line is, uh, this is a current position we're filling a vacancy for. We've added one point five three acres of mowing and one and a half miles of public maintained roadway since twenty eighteen. That's going to go up to two point seven five when we get Northlands and Cuba done, um. You know, this is, um, we're not adding to it, we budgeted for this, we planned for this. Um, and the one thing that we did discuss during this, we do have two current employees that are within one to two years of retirement. Um, we could delay this, um, then when that experience walks out the door, we're gonna. Start fresh and hope that they can, you know, we can build those positions and get them up to speed. Think there's places to cut and others, it's, you know, maybe not a wise place to cut.
Well, I keep going to the fact that we talked about contract mowing and I hear him say, all we do is, I mean, you do a lot more, don't take this wrong. Well, I keep going to the fact that we talked about contract mowing, and I hear him say, all we do is, I mean, you do a lot more, don't take this the wrong way Shane, what you do is very important. But we keep going back to the mowing, we keep going back to buying lawn mowers, the maintenance, all the things that other cities are doing differently, and we keep doing the same thing. And it's not working right now.
Uh, I think we've talked about the mowing before, that's certainly something worth looking at, I think that's an adjacent conversation though, I don't think all cities are doing that. Um, but I think that, you know, if we were to figure something out for the mowing situation, that would open up uh, the employees to focus on other respective duties. Um,
I agree.
I haven't done any asphalt in this year. It's sitting there waiting to be used, but I know, me too, but I just don't have the manpower to get it there.
Well, I do have a, just a, a question about, you know, we're starting this person off, where the other one left? Why don't we start off at maybe a lower bit of rate? Um, until they have, because they have what, a ninety-day probationary period? Until they have fulfilled their probationary period, and then step them up at that point, or something of that nature?
So we looked at that, um, traditionally, we've only done that with salaried employees, um, and Spencer was the one exception. Um, in the past, we've not done that with hourly employees, they start out at whatever the rate is, so they're ninety-day, or in some cases, uh, it's been a longer probation, um, they've not received a salary increase at that ninety days.
Okay. Well, it might be something to think about. Because I know there's gotta be some, even though you say she, he's coming in with all the right skills, there's still gotta be some acclamation to how things are done within the city, some training and so forth, so there is still a learning curve, irregardless of having all the right credentials.
When the app, when the job was listed there for opening, was the pay rate included in that? So that person has interviewed based on the twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents?
Yeah, we can't do anything but
Right.
Now, but maybe for the future.
I understand the traditional part, but we probably moving forward, maybe need to rethink that a little bit, sort of align with what Dan's talking about as far as trying to be maybe a little bit more forward thinking and where we can save a little money, but build that that internal knowledge of. So when we get to budget time next year, there's something we might be able to talk about.
And we will, I mean, it's an adjacent point, but uh, just as you're talking about it, we will see some of that, so that was planned, and this position was planned for the entirety of fiscal year twenty-five, and we're now a month or so into it, so we will save uh, some that we had not been spending for the last year, but.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Uh, council, is there anything you'd like to add? Is there any public comment?
I don't, I, I don't think the wages, after hearing he's got a Class A CDL, I don't think that's bad wage for a Class A CDL. Say, I'm gonna say that.
Thanks for adding that in. Uh, Shane, I just, I do want you to at least hear that I don't, I don't think the council is being personal about their inquiries here this evening. I, I do appreciate the council being fiscally responsible and and having the open discussion, just please don't take any of it personal, because I, I, I don't believe there's any intent there. Uh, Kaylee, would you conduct a roll vote?
From?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Motion carried on a four yes vote, one nay vote. Motion carries. Seven point six, discussion of possible action, Third Street Sidewalk Project Traffic Study.
Uh, so I did wanna break this apart specifically and talk just a little bit, um, as an extension to the project's uh, update. Um, what we're looking at at this particular one, there's been some uh, inquiries into having a separate um, traffic study to go along with the four-to-three lane conversion. Uh, for the most part, that project is either covered by grants or reimbursements, um, uh, so that, that's all good news, uh, the traffic study itself is not included in that, however. Um, uh, Melissa and HR Green uh, has provided a few different um, pieces of information from other areas in the state that have went to the four-to-three lane uh, to show that, maybe I'm stretching a little bit here, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not been a case where it has not benefited. Um, so I don't know that, that there's a reason to think that it wouldn't here. Um, I guess the bottom line is, is uh, if we're going to do the traffic study prior to the the four-to-three lane conversion as part of the Third Street Sidewalk Project, we are gonna have to add an additional approximately twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars uh, for that traffic study. Um, and I'm not exactly sure how long that would take, but um, either way, um, I think they're ready to proceed with the professional services agreement, we just kinda need to determine if this is something we're gonna include in that, uh, or if we're just going to move forward with the original proposal. Uh, and I'll let you take it from there.
Sure, uh, good evening, everybody, my name's uh, Brian Willham, I'm with HR Green, I work with Melissa, and I lead up our, our traffic and transportation planning uh, group for the company, so like Jeremiah said, we had provided some, you know, some numbers for a for a full-blown traffic study, if, if that's something that you wanted to move forward with. Um, but, you know, in this case, and a lot, a lot of times when we'll do that full-blown traffic study, that's kind of back, um, you know, when a project's being developed, like, a lot of times that study's done as a part of like a, a funding application and things like that, to help prove that the, that the project will work and help secure the funds. Um, you know, in, in this case, you've already got the, the funding, um, and like Jeremiah mentioned, you know, this, a, a street like this, the the Iowa DOT, you know, they're really comfortable with, uh, and we are too, you know, with, with streets that have sort of, you know, less than eight or nine or ten thousand cars a day, which is what we've got, you know, here in this case, those um, always work really well from an operation standpoint, um, and so, you know, I think, I think there's, there, you know, should be a good comfort level that it's gonna work, and I apologize, I haven't been in a lot of the conversations leading up to this, but um, but, you know, if, if there's still, you know, questions or, you know, reservations about it, we could even do something like put together some educational materials, you know, for you to share with um, anybody who has questions or, or put on the website, um, that we can really do, you know, really whatever you all are feeling you might need, just for some backup information, you know, as we move into the, move into the project, so.
What are some of the questions that could be answered with the study?
So with this, so with the study, you know, we take a look at, we, we would perform traffic counts at all the major intersections and be able to say, you know, today, there's uh, X amount of time where you might have to, to wait to make a left turn. If we change it from four lanes to three lanes, you might have to wait, you know, a, a few more seconds longer, so it's, it's things that we all, you know, kinda understand that are gonna work, but it's just putting some, some data and some science behind it, just sort of as a, as a due diligence uh, document. Um, but like I said, a lot of times, that, that very formal study and report, that's what's used to then apply for funds, and you guys have already successfully got the funds, which is, which is fantastic. So, we're happy to do whatever you would like, um, you know, on a, on a small scale, of just providing some educational materials, all the way up to a more detailed study, if, if that's what, you know, you want.
So, I guess, because this is your area of expertise, what would you need to see as the engineer from a formal traffic study that would make you say, maybe this isn't the right project?
Sure, and that, that really gets into um, just a lot of traffic volume, so if we were talking about, and, and these, these types of convergence can be successful on streets that have like twelve, fifteen, sixteen thousand cars a day, then you really start to feel, um, you know, a little bit of a, a little bit more congestion during peak hours and things. But a lot of times, it's, that trade-off is still worth it, because you still get the benefit of the shorter crosswalks, and, you know, you don't have faster traffic passing other people, you know, in the second lane, um, it's easier to make left turns, because now everybody's lined up making left turns instead of kind of offset and trying to look around, you know, the person coming at you.
But since we've already got plans in place for the conversion?
Right.
As a, as an engineer for this project, are you comfortable with the data you already have that suggests that this plan should move forward, that you don't see a benefit to having a formal traffic study?
Oh, we're, yeah, we're comfortable, it's just more of, if you all need some support or some backup, um, then we can provide that too. Yeah.
Well, I just know that, I had already, I'd received a couple of inquiries about it, people saying that they really weren't favor of narrowing it down to two lanes and a turn lane, they wanted to leave it at four lanes. You know, and, and I know at different peak points, like when some of the businesses let out, school lets out, there's some heavy traffic on that road, because, you know, there's only so many ways out of Animalza, there's, there's not a lot of avenues going out, and that is one of the main routes out to pick up one fifty-one for the fire trucks to get out and get to the east side and get onto the, the highway and so forth, so I just wanna make sure that everything is covered in your thought process, not just, oh, you know, we've got what, three to five thousand cars a day, but also that is a main, main way out, that is a main um, safety route for the fire station, that is a lot of traffic for school. Um, I don't know if they still do it, but I know at one time, the elementary school cars would line up all the way out to the Mexican restaurant on that road to go pick up kids.
Still happens.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's some other things to consider in this thought process.
I don't see how this is gonna improve traffic flow at all, zero. I don't, I'm not an expert at that, I don't see it, I just don't see it.
Well, I, I've seen cars that have wanted to turn onto the four lane and have to sit there for a long time, and this is just gonna back them up unless we put in stop signs and slow down the traffic flow and create even more um, time spent to get out of town.
And, reading to the other, you probably?
Well, and we could put stop sign in at some place, but you know, I think we could have taken this up to the fire station and taken across and taken the sidewalk out on Second Street and back, and then eliminated some of that, but we could have still put in some stop signs.
On the portal?
On the portal, if we wanted to.
I guess I'm like, Brooke, I don't, this isn't my specialty either, so I don't, I don't know about the technical, um, whether it will or won't improve. I, I just, I guess I would add that this was never meant to improve this um, street. The whole purpose behind this was to obtain a goal of getting that uh, pedestrian walkability out to that side of town. This was the most feasible way to do it, because you, maintaining the four lane and trying to accomplish our goal of getting that pedestrian walkability um, created a whole host of other problems, we were running into public utilities, uh, a brand-new trail, encroachment on people's private property, so this was kind of again, I don't know that it was, it meant to be an improvement, it was just meant to be the best way to accomplish what we were trying to accomplish.
So, how the traffic study, we've already spent a three, four, eight grand, that grant or funding?
Several, I, I believe two, but I, I don't recall exactly.
What are the what are the strings or the requirements of that grant, of those funds, and do they we've got access to them, but it's specific that we have to do this type of a project yet? And that's a consideration as well, but if it says, if it's just, here's the money, figure out what to do with it, come up with a plan, but we don't necessarily care what that plan is, because I don't know what the I don't know what the requirements are of the funds that have been reportedly committed to it.
I don't know if you have an answer for that, I know that the four-to-three lane, at least the preliminary plans were submitted as a part of those uh, grant funding applications, but I don't know at what point it hinges under that concept.
Yeah, and, and because, you know, be, because the DOT is a big proponent of the four-to-three lane, that's exactly why they supported the project.
But it is, but the money that is there?
Yep.
Is designated for that purpose, but does it say if it is not used for a four-to-three conversion, then the money goes away, or, I guess I don't know what the parameters of how we get, how we use that money if we're gonna use it?
Sure, I, yeah, I believe it would be contingent on you doing a four-to-three lane project, and then if you decided not to, then they would, then I'm sure the agreement reads that they could take it back.
Thank you.
Um, another question about this is snow, wintertime, who's cleaning this, and how is it cleaned?
Um, I believe that, yeah, the, the new guy, um, I believe it'd be handled the same way, I mean, the width of the roadway is not going to change, it's gonna be the same, so.
So, for the, where the people are walking, there's not a barrier put up?
Uh, is there a lip or a curb of some sort, I'm not entirely sure.
Section for those people?
Well, I believe, I don't have the, the plans with me, and, and Melissa didn't share those with me, but um, I believe it's a separated trail off of the, off of the road.
It's in the, taking up this.
Oh, dollar, they go like Oak Street, then you go over to North Oak, and then you go in front of uh, the old lawyer's house. Yeah, apply your own stand.
But, but is the city responsible for that snow removal?
I don't know how that's, I'm
I mean, I, that's gonna be my guess, is that's gonna be an added person doing something with a skid loader, a snow blower, or something.
Yeah, I mean.
What I don't know is if there's some sort of a, a difference in elevation, or how that
Well, I would think there'd have to be some separation of some kind.
Yeah, because I assume the streets, so just the four-to-three lane, you'll end up with, you know, essentially a paved shoulder, so white line, curb will still be there, and then the trail, sidewalk or trail beyond that.
Still gonna be behind the curb, Rich, the trail. Still gonna be behind the curb, Rich, the trail. Until they cross at Oak Street. And then they'll get on the north side all the way out to as far as you want to go to the east. And you're over there, I don't know.
Say that, say that again, they're gonna be behind the curb?
I believe they'll be behind the curb.
How can you do that?
They'll be in people's yard.
So you're, you're going to shorten it up, you're gonna do like you did up on Stickamore, then it's? You're gonna do that, you're gonna bring out the, the yard, so to speak, and put?
Which falls in the right way.
And so, actually, as a part of this more educational stuff that we could do, is we could provide some, you know, easier to read cross-sections to, to show exactly what you're asking about.
Well, Rod, it wouldn't be in the right way, it'd be in the old street section, so it would actually be in city's property.
Which is also right away.
Well, it's in the roadway.
I guess I was gonna mention too, we could even do something like, you know, if there's, if there's a specific concern about the um, the school backup. Is we could just really focus and just look at that particular issue. You know, rather than the entire thing, just as far as trying to keep costs down, keep that reasonable, too.
One thing I guess I just wanna throw out too, I just kinda thought of it, but with the changes uh, at the school, the way they're I imagine the traffic will change anyways from what we're accustomed to. Yeah, so I don't know, I guess if that's gonna be good or bad, but it may give a misleading interpretation if we go on past information with the new upcoming changes too, I don't know.
I don't think it'll change Strawberry Hills' traffic.
So I could work with Melissa and, and come back and, you know, provide a, a short scope of work, for some educational materials, some good cross-sections. More like a three D, so it's really easy to see what's going on, and then maybe a specific, you know, look, look just at that, at that school backup issue too, and see if, you know, we need to do anything um, different just for that particular part of the, the design right there, we could do something like that.
It might be the best bet, I, I personally, I have not witnessed any of these backups that you guys are referencing, I don't doubt that they don't exist.
And I have seen people trying to walk back and forth from the east side of Cabaye that to the. And something doesn't even be done, I think you need sidewalks to get up there, cause there are a lot of people that do walk, I guess I would like to see a little bit more about what we could do to try to work on the bottleneck over by the school. I, I think it's not, I think it's worth looking to.
Were we good with uh, coming back to the table with more, more details, more information? Uh, and not moving forward with any traffic study approval at this time? So, I'm here. Works for me. Uh, is there anything else you would need from the city to uh, advance or move this along?
I don't think so, unless you all can think of any other, you know, I spoke, like specific hotspots. That are in your mind, um, school's a good, a good one, let's take a look at.
Okay, again, I can't provide any, cause I'm not here during those peak traffic hours.
Nope, no, that's great, and ultimately, we just wanna provide what's the most useful for you, we, we don't wanna do a traffic study just to do a traffic study, I mean, bottom line, so.
We appreciate that. Alright, thanks Brian for being in attendance to clarify some things and say we got a plan moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Seven point seven, discussion of possible action, single garbage hauling municipal solid waste services, pleasness, pleasner sanitation.
Alright, my name's Adam, I'm here with Pleasners. I'm here to bring up a discussion about the benefits of a single hauler for town. I feel like a single hauler in town is a great asset to any town, especially the size of Anamosa. It really cuts down on the amount of heavy trucks you got going up and down your narrow residential street. And then it provides, I feel like it just keeps town cleaner and it's less nuisance to the city. I don't know if you guys are afraid of, you know, putting all your eggs in one basket, if you like freedom twice. But I feel like they're great additives to city hauler. You guys have any negative feedback, you guys, are you happy with your current garbage situation to have four or five garbage companies in town?
I've got a couple questions.
Okay.
So, if, if we were to consider single haulers, obviously we'd have to let that out for a bid, but how is that, how is that going to be billed to our citizens? Do they get a bill from the hauler, or does that get added to a water bill, or how is that gonna?
Almost every contract I've seen, the city would be responsible. You know, for a city hauler, if you guys went to one hauler, most cities tack it in with a utility bill. You know, they bill their citizens for water sewer and the garbage. Collect then, then one check to the hauler is what most haulers prefer.
So then, cause I hope to achieve this status someday sooner rather than later, what if I decide I wanna leave in January first, to go to Florida for three months out of the year, I'm not using the service, do I still get billed for it, or how does that? How does that work if you're not utilizing the service?
Every hauler's different, so you can work that out with each one, but for us, if you're hooked up to their water, and you have water supply there, then you know, you should have a garbage supply there. If you go on vacation, winterize your house, pull yourself off of that service. You know, we have a winter vacation hold, where we wanna service that address for three months. You know, and you wanna get charged too. I'd say that would be if the city's responsible, we'd decide what they want to. All of our contracts, all of our towns, we like to keep things as easy and simple as possible. So, we don't do that for most towns, and if we do, there's only a few residents that leave. Um, another thing with the city, a one hauler thing is, the city can decide what they want in that contract. Every city has different needs, if you don't want your street departments picking up the city curb cams, you can put that in your bid, you know, you can request weekly trash pickup, weekly recycle pickup, you know. You guys, if you're looking for a hauler, doesn't have to be us, you know, I'm just here to bring up this discussion. But the city can decide what they feel their needs are, you know, talk about amongst yourselves, see what you want. Come up with what you're looking for, throw a bid out, and see, there's a lot of great garbage companies around the area, you know, there's four that service. I feel like if you put your heads together and thought on what you wanted, it could make everybody's life easier, I know, I think the residents would save some money. You know, with one hauler in town, having that pickup by one guy, having one left bill to pay for a hauler. And then looking into the possibilities of citywide cleanups or bulk item cleanups. I know all of our towns that we service, if we have a contract for the city, the city, the dumpsters, the police department, fire department, pools, they all get free dumpster serviced. Just kinda goes in with the city, and we like to take a lot of the headache, the, the miss trash or the complaint, you know. As many phone calls as you can forward to our office that we're open from six to five. Just the better communication we have, and we get the problems addressed a lot sooner than the people calling the city. Not being very friendly or polite, most of them aren't, they get their garbage missed, and then the city being responsible to reach out to different haulers holding them accountable, there's just one single, you know, contact, one connection, usually a lot less problems.
So, a couple of questions for you, for the company you work for. Special garbage cans, I'm going to assume?
Yep.
Because you're gonna probably come in, pick them up.
Yep.
Help them, put it back, so you're limited on garbage, on the garbage you can put out.
Yep. Not necessarily, cause uh, for our company, we would provide the can, and we have different can sizes to provide. Most of our towns have a sixty-five gallon can, some of them have a ninety-five gallon can. The garbage can to see holds a lot more than the normal ones do. We also provide bag tags, and then I, all of our drivers pick up extras at their you know, kind of, if they feel like that they don't have to, but our drivers pick up ninety percent of the extra garbage, as they take pride in their jobs, they know everybody has parties, they don't want to, you know, do a bad job. But no matter what town you're in, there's always a resident that have a daycare or a lot of kids, they're just trash that they've accumulated for years. That they, you know, don't wanna get rid of, but we also offer two cans, you, you can get two cans if you have a a large family or a, a stay-at-home daycare or something, get two cans, and that helps with a lot of the extra baggage.
So would that cost more for that, if they got two cans?
Yeah.
Be a higher price?
Yep, most of them would just pay for two cans through the city, and this depends on whatever the contract does, like some haulers will, they won't have any cans, they'll have a three or four bag limit, anything over that three or four bags, you gotta bag tag. You know, the tags cost two dollars, three dollars, four dollars, whatever the hauler sets to take the extra bags. But for us, we can fit a lot more garbage than those six five gallon cans than your typical can from Monarch. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we'd provide all two thousand homes, you know, with a trash can and a recycle can. You know, we like to do recycle every other week, that's worked for us for most of our cities, but every city is different, you know, for their need and want.
So, Jeremiah, I have a question, if they would build a city, what kind of workload would that put on city hall?
Uh, we've discussed this, I don't think it would add any, we put it in our utility billing software, and it pretty much happens.
That's usually how, when, if we get a new town, they would send us the Excel file for their, you know, what you guys have in your thing, we download into ours, the bill would get fed on, I know a lot of towns, let's say you settle with a hauler that eighteen dollars a month for the trash service, you know, trash weekly recycle every other week. You guys, as a city, could charge your resident twenty dollars a month for the garbage. You know, use that extra two dollars to help pay for postage, just send it out there, if you want city cleanup every fall, you know, every spring or fall, that two dollars times two thousand households like that could go to citywide cleanup. I know some cities pay for nuisance, like nuisance abandoned houses when you get a lot of complaints. They got a little excess money in their garbage fund, can pay a hauler, any hauler to kinda clean that up. Keep town, you know, looking nice.
So, how do you handle people that don't pay their bill?
Um, so I don't know, that would probably be part of the contract, how we go through that process. I don't know if that's something that you've encountered, um, if that's passed along.
I haven't encountered much of it, I stay out of the billing, but I feel like you know, maybe that'd just be a cost that the town would eat, you know, let's say you have this cost and you'd get ten, twenty people that aren't paying their bill, you know, then you guys could go after them, try and get them taxes, but that would be.
So, I'm assuming you would sign a one-year contract, two-year contract, what do, what do you, what do you normally do?
For us, it'd be a five-year contract, could be a little bit longer, but if we have the cost to purchase these cans, these cans aren't cheap, but they pay for themselves in the long run, we like to have five-year contracts. You know, every, every hauler could be different. That could be something you guys, you know, look at, if you do decide to put out the bid, you know, you'll, I hope you get a lot of different options, you guys could weigh out what you feel would be best for your town.
And if you, with a five-year contract, is the price a little bit for the five years, or are you gonna fluctuate? Say, okay, after six months, we're five, into this five-year contract, now you're gonna
No.
Raise it a dollar.
All of ours, the ones we've been doing, and all of our, are pretty much the same, we're trying to keep everything the same, consistent. First year would be at that rate, um, after the third year, it would go up a certain percentage, three to five percent typically average. And then that fifth year would go up, so the first and second year would be the same. Third and fourth would be a five percent increase, and the fifth year would be a five percent increase from year four. Is what something like our contract would look like.
For your company, it would be garbage and recycling, do you guys do any kind of lead pickup in the fall or anything like that?
Um, we don't, uh, well, we, some towns we do, like we do pick up yard waste. You know, if that's something, if you guys don't pick up your own yard waste, you could throw that in there as something you were looking for, you know, to have garbage recycling and yard waste. Spring to fall, or a set date, just that date. Those are, you know, options you can ask the hauler to provide. Um, our company, we like to do all the towns in one day, kinda like, we like to get in and get out, so we would bring three trucks sitting for trash, two or three trucks in for trash, you know, one or two for recycle. Kinda get in and out, we like that the best, keeps cans out on the street for one day instead of three or four and five, it keeps them out of the way for snow in the winter, the wind, you know, every day on garbage day in the year, you know, it gives that you, only one chance for it to be crappy weather out on your collection.
Any other questions for Adam? I would agree with Todd that, and we cannot commit this evening.
Yes.
This would have to be let out for bid, we know, it would just be neighborly of those that have been providing the service to the residents that they have shot, if council is gonna opt to go with a single.
Yep.
Hauler, uh, and I'm sure if we do at that time, you know, there, there's other questions that would have to, uh, or discussions that would have to occur. Some of the ones I would think about would be what, what various items are not included.
Yeah.
Whether it be garbage and or recycle.
Yeah.
So, appreciate you coming and presenting this evening. I will keep in mind, council is not making a decision this evening.
Yeah, there's no decision, this is the discussion, you know.
If some of the public would have questions, I guess we would entertain them at this time, knowing that there is no decision this evening.
If I may.
Yes.
I'm not in support of specifically Pleasners, obviously, I don't know anything about the company, but I am in favor of a single hauler for um, the city of Anamosa. There's a few things, one, with the type of um, cans that they're talking about, they stay upright easier, which means they're not gonna be falling over, which is gonna decrease the amount of trash that's blowing around on the streets. Uh, also, when it's in that type of can, it's really hard for, ask the berman to get into them, which also ask the berman to get into them, which also keep, um, the amount of trash on the streets down. Um, when people leave their trash out in garbage bags sitting on the street, it tends to get ripped up a lot. Um, I also feel that, uh, cities that have a single hauler that's reliable that are required for citizens. It decreases the amount of trash in the city, which decreases the amount of the amount of nuisances that I've had to take care of that deal with junk by definition in our code that could be alleviated by having a single hauler that shows up to that residence every single week. I think would be very beneficial. So again, not specifically for cleaner, but just the idea of a single hauler.
I, I guess my goal tonight is to get the city of animals to have its city, single hauler. Whether or not be, you know, I feel like the city would benefit from it greatly. I feel like a lot of the business owners. I'd imagine if I was a business owner in town, I would have two locks on my dumpsters. For, you know, to keep all the people I don't wanna pay for the garbage out. Having a single hauler in there that comes every week would limit that greatly. So just an open discussion, you know. I think it'd be very wise to talk about what your needs are if you want. Yard waste picked up, city can picked up. Think, kind of discuss what you want and then potentially throw it out to bid for all the local companies and maybe even a new grown company to come in. So. Alright, I appreciate your guidance.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Thanks. Seven point eight, discussion of possible action, purchase of transfer switch at the streets department shop.
In rural streets department. Um, so we got a generator from the utilities department, which we've never had. Um, this would be just a switch when the power goes out, throws the generator on when the lights are out. And shuts off when, when the lights come back on. Um. Our doors are pretty heavy and so trying to lift them when the power's out is a no-go. Or climbing a ladder to the top of eighteen plus feet, kind of shaky. Um, so there's a safety aspect to this. Um, so there's three beds and and I'm more in favor for the cheaper bed. Um, just because I don't need all the flashy hoods and whistles. I just need the, um, generator to turn on when the lights go out, open the doors for an emergency or something happening in town and then to get the doors back shut or to heat the building when the lights go out. Um, and then it doesn't come back on throughout. Um, kind of protects us. We have pretty good sized water lines going across that whole entire building. And it would be a horrible, horrible mess. Um, if they broke. This is installment two on top of the, on top of the, to buy it. So all we need is the, this transfer switch and then they'll come and hook it up and the generators are already sitting there. And I'm paying for it already to be serviced. Yes. Yep.
How long has it been up there? Cause I just saw it.
Uh, almost a year. We didn't have the money last year budgeted, so I budgeted for it this year. Um, and last year I had kind of an idea what I thought we were gonna be paying and it came in a lot less than I thought. So I was super excited about that too. Um, this will handle our doors, our electricity, our lights. An air compressor probably won't handle the welder at the same time, but we could shut something off. This is just so, um, like I said, on the weekends of, or at night if the power would go off. We'd have, be able to get in and get, get somewhere. Um, not too long ago, this spring. The power went out down by me and out on, uh, sixty-four and I needed to get stop signs, four-way stop signs out there. I couldn't get my white pick about. So I use my own personal pick. And I don't think that's right, but I didn't have that extra person there, but I didn't need that extra person to put out four stop signs and four, um, sandbags either. Um, but to climb up on a ladder to run a drop cord up was, in my opinion, was too dangerous. And so I just didn't use my vehicle.
So Shane, who'd you get this from, from the one you're proposing?
Um, I'm not, Delancy did all the work. I'm guessing right from Generac, cause everything else is from, um, Al Toffer and um, the Kohler dealer.
You did a good job of getting three beds and letting me see them. Thank you.
Yep. So like I said, I'm not, I'm not per, I don't care about the first two. I know they're really expensive. Um. But I think the, the third option is a, a good option too. I think just to get it so we've got the safety and we can get in and out of our building when we need to. And not wait for the power to come on. Cause if half the county's out, I'm probably out. Cause I'm, I'm on that line that goes out Fairview. And then the line out here is off of Dubuque Street and Second. So we've had that where the four lanes out, I need to be out of my building to go that way.
I'll make the motion approve. Be able to get it in.
Soon as I call him, I guess, no, probably.
Yep, the general.
Good.
Uh, motion by Dan, second by Todd. Further council discussion. Public comment? Haley?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried. Seven point nine, discussion of possible action, curb stop procedures improvements.
Uh, to kick this off, um, this has been one of the things that City Hall, we've been kind of looking at for a little while now. Um, just as a, uh, procedural or process improvement thing. Um, I think everybody's aware this came up as an adjacent discussion as the bills, as part of the bills at the last session. There was some interest in taking a closer look at this. Um, so it's been kind of ongoing, but that really um, suggested to me that it needed to be back on the council agenda, um, to kind of figure, figure out how we were gonna proceed. Uh, what I've included in your packet are all the, uh, ordinances that reference curb stops. I tried to highlight, um, I, I didn't highlight all the references to curb stops, but I did highlight the ones that I think uh, if there was gonna be some ordinance changes, um, these would have to change. Um, after the ordinances, uh, there's several pages of those. After the ordinances, um, I included a memo that was issued to the, um, public utilities and city hall personnel just recently. Was just more of a recap of those things that we have changed internally. As administrative or operational procedures that did not necessarily require any changes, uh, to the ordinance or through the council. Uh, so these improvements that you see in the memo is what we've, uh, enacted separate from any ordinance changes, but, uh, I guess I wanted the council to see both. And if there was some desire to take this further and look at those ordinances. Um, we can certainly have that discussion and I've included those to look at.
Well, I've got a question and you can tell me if I'm kind of going down the wrong path. But is there any reason that we couldn't maybe take advantage of modern technology and sidestep curb stops? And go to the water meters that we can shut off? So that it's basically in effect doing the same thing?
Um, I don't think there's a reason that we can't. Um, we, that is something the newer meters have the capabilities of doing. They are more expensive meters, um. And that would require some changes still, the ordinance, just because the current ordinances require both the working curb stop and the, the meter.
Well, I'm reading the, the definitions and so forth. I, I get that, but even though they are a little bit more expensive than the regular meter, there's still what, a quarter of the cost of replacing a curb stop? Cause they're what, four hundred, five hundred dollars, something like that?
Right around five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to me, it makes sense to, you eliminate costs, it's easier to do, less labor intensive and less chance of ripping up a, a fiber line or a gas line or anything else.
And I'll let Steve address it more. The one thing we kind of just briefly discussed at City Hall was, um, the one thing that people I think often overlook is the reason for the curb stops. I mean, yes, they do allow the city, uh, to shut the water off in events of non-payment, things like that. Um, but the, the real purpose for them is if something happens faulty with the meter inside or in that service line and for some reason the meter cannot be just shut off. The curb stop does provide an extra layer of ability to shut things down before that. So.
We had a
One thing we talked about.
It's been, let's see, it was about right around the first, right around the fourth of July, we had a, had a house on South Garnaville that um, we was notified that the house was weeping. And we went up and looked and they had a line break in their upstairs bathroom. And somebody was mowing their yard. The, the old lady had been relocated to a nursing home. And we went up, did our due diligence. We found the curb stop, but we couldn't turn it. And so it took a couple more hours to try to get a hold. It's a good, good thing this person knew somebody that knew the family was able to get ahold of the daughter to get us into the house to get the water shut off. But yeah, like Jeremiah says, it's a, it's nice to have the curb stop there. Also make sure it's working. So if something does go bad and you're going on vacation for a month and somebody drives by and see your house is leaking, you know, we can go shut it off. So.
But you could shut it off at the meter too and
Yes, we could.
It would, unless the line broke ahead of the meter, that would be the only problem.
And, and we have had a couple of them since I've been here that the, the line did break in the yard before it got to the house. And it was found when, uh, we were doing loc, locates, I believe. They walked across the yard and seen it was bunky. So, and then we was able to shut the curb stop off. Again, it was another abandoned house.
I know we've also had the problem where somebody did shut it off at the curb stop. And we thought the house did not have water and they had somebody else come in and turn it on. And they weren't being billed for like seven months. So you've got it both ways. I mean, you guys turned it off. They had their friend come in, turn it back on.
Mm-hmm.
And then they didn't get billed for stuff.
Well, there, there was another house that they pulled the meter out. And we didn't realize that they had done that. And then somebody, one of my guys drove by the house and seen the guy standing there with a hose. He went back, got the stuff, read the meter. The meter was still reading what it was when it was shut off. Three years before that, I think it was. But they had pulled the meter out and set it there and then they had plumbed around it.
Well, I don't have much for a legal background, but I think that'd be called stealing, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it was. It was. So.
But I think that also would have indicated that at the billing department, somebody should have been saying, oh, we're not sending them a bill. If the, if the meter hadn't changed and we weren't getting a reading.
But in, on that one there, it was assumed that it was shut off. The last we known, it was shut off at the cur, or shut off inside the house, because the curb stop couldn't be found at that point in time.
I had a guy call me, uh, true talk to you, Jesse. What, what went on there? What, I mean, what's the procedure? Was, is the water needed shut off or what?
Yeah, so that particular situation, um, there was a lot and I, I did talk to him. Um, we had a good meeting and kind of discussed the issues. Um, he had indicated that he didn't receive the notice that we had sent out saying that we couldn't locate the meter, uh, or the curb stop, sorry, and, uh, needed to repair that, needed to get it located. Um, he said that he did not get that initial notice. Um, past practice has been regardless of the reason, whether it's a, uh, located and broken or not located or dirt, dirt and sand in it. Um, the procedure is always the same. They get the sixty-day notice. If nothing has happened in sixty days, um, we have somebody go in and we take care of that, uh, at that sixty-day or shortly thereafter, uh, mark. Uh, and that is what happened. Um, we had the work contracted out. They went in, located it. It was in fact broken. Uh, they repaired it, um, and then he received a bill for the work that was performed. Um, so in that particular situation, that was one of the factors driving the changes that we made. Um, just talking to Steve and, um, Madison at City Hall as well. We decided to implement the initial, the extra notification. So not only do they get a certified mail, um, as opposed to sending regular mail uh, at sixty days, then another notice at thirty days. I, I think it's fairly consistent to most people that send out bills. You usually get a reminder that, hey, we haven't heard from you in the last thirty days. Just wanna keep you in the loop that in thirty more days, something's gonna happen. Uh, so we added that additional in it. And then, uh, we discussed changing, um, the process depending on what the, the problem actually is. So if it's actually broken and we know it's broken, you've got your sixty days to get it fixed. Um, and then the second notice. If it's just a matter of not being able to locate or needing cleaned, uh, that's separate. That's something different. Then we're looking at, you need to locate the meter and let us know when you found it. If you don't, then we'll come in and locate it, but then we stop the procedure there, then give notification. We found it, it either is or is not broken and something additional needs to happen. And so we kind of start that process over again, giving the proper notice.
Okay. I understand that. I just have another question. Is why? If it was working fine and then you guys go and turn on it and then it's broken?
I believe it wasn't, it wasn't working fine.
I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
Instance, I'm just saying in general.
Yeah, I, I believe it wasn't that, that particular case. It wasn't working fine, but it had not been located. And so that was what we were attempting to do was locate it. Um, and again, past practice has been whether it's broken and we know it's broken, or whether we just can't locate it, it, it went through the same process, so to speak. Um, you know, I think that that was one thing a, as we discussed with that property owner. Uh, we'd like to believe that, you know, there was no, uh, foul play or any wrongdoing or, you know, anything intentional that caused it to bro, be broken in the first place. Um, I, I can't answer that. I just know that once we did get in there and find it, it was broken and then replaced.
Well, and I'm just, I'm just being some of the things that, you know, crossed my mind when he was telling me this. If it's my curb stop, why are you guys wrenching on it?
Yeah, the, the curb stop, I mean, per ordinance, um, specifies that that is the, the city has the purpose of wrenching on it for shutting it off. You know, whatever reasons that the city has for doing that, but yeah, it's.
Just a question, because if mine's working fine now and you guys come up and put a rat key on it and then tell me, uh, it won't shut off now. But it was fine. I don't necessarily want. I don't want my curb stop messed with personally. If it's working, just leave it be.
Yeah. And I don't know, Steve, you can provide more insight into what, I guess that's something I'm not familiar with is how we would come across or have a reason to, to, uh, wrench on somebody's Uh, wrench on somebody's curb stop.
The basically, the only two reasons is you don't pay your bill. Or if you happen to, well, I guess three reasons, if you happen to call the city and say, hey, can you shut my water off because I got a plumber? Coming to do some work, cause we have those requests from time to time. And then, and then the snowbird. You know, we'll go and shut them off, cause they decide to, you know, they're gonna go to Florida or. The southwest or wherever for three months or four months during the winter. And the unfortunate part is. You lived in your house for thirty years and you never had to touch it and then all of a sudden you start, you decide to become a snowbird. And nobody's touched it for thirty years.
And I I understand.
I don't know if it's gonna work.
I just don't, I I'm, I guess I'm asking is, are we only doing this to people that aren't paying their bill?
Yes, yep, we're not, we're not going around, we're not driving around and just dropping keys, we have more important things to do.
Okay, well, I didn't know if we were trying to locate something that, I don't. I mean, I I have an idea where mine is, but it's under earth. So.
And and that's where where most of them are, most of them are covered up just a little bit, just right underneath the surface. And like I said, we're not going out looking for these, the the biggest reason that we come up with on these is because we get. Uh, the individual didn't pay their bill. And now it's time that they've been, they posted and. They got the letter in the mail that said they didn't pay the bill, they got door posted and now we gotta go shut them off.
I have a question, uh. We have people in town that own houses that are now multi-unit. Have separate meters. If the person in unit A is who is supposed to be paying the bill to City Hall for water. But I'm the owner of the property, is the letter that says. Something happened going to the tenant or is it going to the owner of the bill?
I believe it's going to the property owner.
That was my concern is that there could be reason that I don't get notified that my tenants. With meters getting shut off because.
Yeah, I I say I believe, cause I don't, I don't think we're notifying both the tenant and the property owner, which is just the property owner.
So for clarification, the city's responsible not for the meters?
Yes, that's correct.
And if you propose to put. The smart meters or whatever you call them. Then that's on the city, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I if, to me, if it's a difference between. I'm gonna pay eighteen hundred dollars to have it dug up or I pay five hundred dollars for a smart meter. I as the property owner would spend the five hundred dollars for the smart meter initially. And then it would be on the city to the rest of the way. So if they did have that in place, Rich, and their curb stop was not working or functional. Is that something the city needs to take over? In addition to the meter? I wouldn't see why. Because you are still responsible for your water line. From your house to the the main water line. So that's still was the property owner's responsibility. So is it from the curb stop to the main is the city?
No.
Curb stop beyond that to the services, the house.
The ordinances wrote from the corporation stop, which is the tap in the water main, all the way into the house is the property owner.
And we have other towns that it's just the opposite, is that correct?
There's some other towns around that are that way.
There are, if if you, I I don't wanna say it's, um. I guess I don't feel comfortable giving a number, but if you Google it, you'll find both, I mean, I wouldn't say one is uncommon or more common. Uh, I think you find them, it's set up to both, you know, both ways.
Fifty fifty?
Sure.
Well, I think you've got. For most utilities coming into your house, from their main to your house is your responsibility. For most utilities, I think.
Black Hills tells me that that's correct for my house anyways, I keep getting notification of it.
Excuse me, excuse me, do you wanna come up to the podium?
Line energy is responsible from the weather head out.
Is it, okay.
Gas meters from the meter out, that's their line.
Okay.
Uh, as far as you guys saying, well, I I don't understand why you wouldn't take over the meters or the curb stops. What's, who who operates that curb stop? I mean, I i- if I need to shut off, I don't go to my toolbox and grab a eight foot key to turn it, the city does. Uh, I really don't like the idea that I'm paying for something. That curb stop, just the privilege of the city being able to turn me off, if they want to turn me off, they can use their equipment. I don't mean their key, I mean their equipment, curb stop. As for the meter, that's your cash register, right? Think of it that way, the gas meter, the electric meter, that's their cash register. Same with the water meter. I want to go to Walmart to shop, I'm not paying for that cash register, I'm just paying for what I what I bought. Why, why would we, even if you went with the smart meters, why would we pay five hundred dollars? For the privilege of being turned off? That's your guys' responsibility to have the ability to turn off now, you can say it's in the ordinance, you're right. I understand all the ordinance. You need rewrite the ordinance. But as you tell, and yes, you are gonna find, cause I've looked myself. Some cities do it, some don't, I I don't know what the percentage is, but it's not like almost everybody does it this way, it's not. So I think you could, I'd like to see you consider taking ownership of the meters and of the curb stops. Unless you got a question for me as to what what's my thinking on them, other than what I just said. Thank you.
Robert Young, util- or assistant utilities, so another way to look at this, the city of Vinton had this same argument about five to seven years ago. About who owned what, their compromise this was actually put meter pits, so which in turn, take your meter outside your house. Also puts curb stop outside of the house. And it drops it in the right way. So now, not only can we lock out a meter in a meter pit with a padlock, it also has a five point on it that people can't get into. But then it also gets rid of any curb stop issue that they may have. And it also fixes if there's a break between the meter and the house, cause a lot of times that that water. Is not metered and it could be three days, five days, two weeks, four weeks, whatever it might be, but now it gets metered. So that's another way to look this, and especially on all these developments that we have. It's a good place to start with the developments, start getting the meter pits in, Vinton did this, they've had good success with it. They don't really freeze, I haven't heard of one that froze, we have seven or eight of them here in town that have not froze. Um, so we are utilizing them as well in the parks and everything else, so that's another way to look at this going down the road. And maybe fixing, hey, here's who owns what, okay, we have a meter pit, the city owns the meter pit and meter inside. And then the curb stops also right there with the meter pit, so it doesn't get lost, doesn't get buried and it stays above ground. That's just my two cents on the city event and how they've kind. Had this discussion and kind of fixed it in a way and kind of put more ownership on us, but it also helps. The homeowners have more responsibility if it should break between that meter pit and the house. So that's just another way to potentially look at this and put meter pits in, so it kind of curves that who owns what. Last step, price the meter pit, right around your first part, uh, about six or eight from now. I don't remember, but about three years ago, we have the meters pit itself was a five, five foot berry. We also bought one foot extension, we did about six foot around, think the meter pit was only about five or six hundred bucks. And then also, you know, has the lid and it had a thermal blanket that goes in. So.
That would be in the customer's yard?
It would be in the right away somewhere, yes. Yeah, it would, it it it'd have to go somewhere in between there, so we inevitably still be digging up the service line. And then you'd be plopping that down in there. So you just set it down in there, hooks up the same way, then it has a retractable base. That goes up, you lift the platform, spin it in place, locks it there, so you can work on the meter, twist it, drop it back down, goes about five and a half, six foot down. And you have a big thick thermal thing, plug, goes down on top of it, keeps the heater. And it also has a false bottom, so if it does get water in it, it drains right back down and doesn't. Like I said, we're using them in, uh, four or five parks at now.
For the meter I've got in my house. Currently. We do these meter pits, what does that do to the meter and house?
All it would do is take it from in your house and put it out.
So there is.
So then you just.
It's gonna require some replumbing and digging up my yard to get to the pit.
So it would just involve straight piping yours, you know, the three and a half or whatever line length your meter is, put in a straight pipe. And that's all the replumbing it would have to do, and then it just move, yes, we dig up in the right of way to put a meter pit in. But then it gets rid of, you know where your curb stops at now, we know where the meter pit is, the only problem you're gonna have is some of these newer homes. Their curb stops in the middle of the right. Some of them are. All we would have to do is go to the meter pit, lift the meter, shut it off, lock it, put it back down, it's off. No, it'd still be the same way as if, so even in your house, you'd still have your protection of having a valve within side of the house. So that way not going away, so you have a valve open, so you still have the valve before the meter like it would, but it'd just be straight. Now, if you call the city, all the city would do is come out, find the meter pit, take it lit up, raise it, turn it off, put it back down there, you're done.
So tell me again what the cost is.
Again, it's like four, four years ago I bought them, I think, and I think the meter pit was a Mueller meter pit. Don't quote me on it, please, but I think it was like six hundred, six or eight hundred dollars just for the pit itself.
That was not installation.
That was not installation, that's just.
What's the cost for the installation?
That is a good question.
Who does the installation, you guys or do we?
We did it, we did it at the parks.
So we did it for the city's problems. Uh, so. We can do them, I also gotta remember, a lot of other things, I can't do two thousand, there's, there's no way. So it'd have to be one of those things, yeah, who who does it, when is it appropriate, when is it not appropriate? Because you gotta remember, we got multi-unit house homes. That, you know, putting a meter pit outside is not going to be the problem.
But is this something that the city pays for or do we build that back to the citizen?
That's, that's a question too.
So. It does create a problem. I think, because if I remember right, Dan. Your water line splits off to your neighbor's house too.
Correct.
Coming up.
I paid for the shut off, my neighbor did not.
Right, but it splits off of after the shut off?
I I can't recall.
So there would have to be. Some work done there for that, if, from what you're telling me, cause they would have to then in turn run a line.
Yeah, and that would also be one of those parts, and just for the sidewalk, get his curb stop right there, so do you want him in the sidewalk? Do you want him up in the yards, that's also other issues that as a council. To work, yeah, work out, iron those details out if you were building up. Well, like a new, new, new developments like Vinton did, they made sure there's enough room between the sidewalk and the curb. To put those in, so any new development was put this way. And then it's on the developer to put those meter pits up.
Well, and that would be the time to do it on new development.
Right, so with new developments going in currently, this may be a time to look at your ordinances. And see what we can do to maybe, hey, the newer stuff, we're gonna plan now and then have a ten, fifteen, twenty year plan. This is how we're gonna go about changing them, again, the city still has to replace meters along the way too, which we haven't done in probably twenty.
So let me ask a question, Robert, how many water main valves we have in this town that need replaced?
Uh, more than I wanna count. Um, the.
But you can't shut them on, yes, water main breaks, you can't shut them on.
Yes, we're slowly going through those.
How many do you have, you got an idea?
Uh. Couple dozen probably, but we're probably, we're working on three to four a year. Um, so, we're, we're, we're starting our own, you know, improvement plan for the water side, because we have come up with these issues, we've also installed new valves. And everything else, prime example is West Main and Elm Street, we added three valves there. To help nicely, we also added another one on Alderman or Crane, Crane, we added one there, because it wasn't, wasn't one there.
I'm just saying, we have work to do on the city side.
We are actively doing so. It's just, again, I don't, we we don't have enough time in the day. To get everything done, it takes us one day, I wanna dig one day, get it all dug up, cause most time you have to shut down. One day is gonna be stuck digging it up, prepping it, next day, cutting it out, replacing it, backfilling, done, so it takes two days. For us to do this, because I don't have four full-time guys that are gonna be with me. We still have other jobs to do.
So if you do have a curb stop that's not functional or it's broke open, so to speak.
Yeah.
And we have somebody come in and fix it.
Yep.
Do you have to do a bacteria test?
No.
How come?
Cause according to appendix A, as long as the line is not dead and they have it unburied. And no chance. And I'm answering your question. Cause appendix A does not require a bacteria test unless you have probable cause for back cycling into your system. Now, to a curb stop, they dig it down, they dig down there, no water's getting in the water, therefore does not constitute bacteria test. Same way with the water re-brain. As long as we dig it up, no water gets in, we don't have to perform any bacteria. And that's an appendix.
I'm not, I'm not picking on anywhere, I'm just. I'm just asking questions, cause I don't know, I'm a wastewater guy, right? Thank you.
So yes, that possibility, I mean, it's, um, regardless of how it happens. It's, we're probably talking several years before we get to that though, so in the meantime. And this is something I'd like to. Try to fix a little bit faster than years or at least look at. Um, so what's in the memo here does not require an ordinance change, those are merely. Um, I would say administrative or procedural on our end that we're just trying to do and it doesn't necessarily. I I guess it doesn't fix those issues, it just. Um. Benefits the citizen as far as how we procedurally handle those things, um. And we can definitely do that.
So on the new developments, which we're gonna be doing some, right? I think we should have some forward thought on exactly what Robert was saying. This, cause we've done it for a hundred years one way, doesn't mean we can't change it. But we also have to be in mind of our. Our older folks in this town that can't pay their utility bills, you know where I'm going with this, we need to be. Accountable. Well, I I still think at least maybe temporarily, if if. For curb stops, we can bypass that and put in the smart meters. I mean, it allows for the shut off if it has to happen. Until we can maybe figure out down the line if we are gonna replace, start replacing with the pits. You know, you don't, to me, you don't wanna dig up and spend eighteen hundred dollars to replace a curb stop.
You know, you don't, to me, you don't wanna dig up and spend eighteen hundred dollars to replace a curb stop. If maybe two to three years, you're gonna put in a pit. And now granted, I know it's gonna be longer than two to three, but it's a temporary pit.
But let me ask, do you have to change the ordinance?
You would, yes, you would.
I think, I mean, if you. If we do moving forward with new developments, talk about pit idea, I think that's what ultimately make us have to change the ordinances. And we'll have to also think about how other people are grandfathered in, how the old system versus the new. But I do think we'd have to look at the.
The only thing that scares me about that, and I guess just piggybacking off what Rich said, because I'm trying to think about your, the, the meter option. Um, which I think is doable, would that be an indefinite? I mean, how do we word, I would hate to say you have to buy this five hundred dollar meter now, I mean, you don't have to, but it's certainly a better. Solution than a eighteen hundred dollar fix, but then a year from now, or two years from now, or five years from now. You also have to fix the curb stop or install a meter pit, I mean, how do we?
We, we look at it as Mike has said, it's, it's our cash register, we put in the meter. Until we figure out what long term's gonna be, because we have in the past so many different. Thought processes on so many old councils of, you know, this house. Comes up and it has two or three lines split off of it, so there's only one shut off valve. Well, the only way to actually accomplish that is with the meters right now, because. That shut off valve, if you turn it, you're shutting off all three houses. So we've gotta figure something out, because we've got, like I said, we've had so many different thought processes in this town. Over so many years of how things should be. And we gotta simplify it, because we can't make everybody go back and retrofit for right now.
So then it becomes, where do we come up with that at the budget?
Well.
I, I.
I know, I know what you're saying, and that's why, to me, it would be, the immediate ones would be the ones that are the troubled ones that, okay. You know, Dan was complaining about the eighteen hundred dollars for the shut off, well, here's your option. Maybe they would buy it, and if they don't wanna buy it, maybe we have to raise their rate a little bit or something to cover the cost, I don't know. But there's gotta be other options available, and we gotta use tech, some of the modern technology that's available, not. Doing something that was designed a hundred years ago.
We have to have some flexibility, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Think before we do much of anything, we're talking about putting. Burton on the citizens, we have to, if we're going to shift. Costs to them temporarily or whatever, I think that we need more than just tonight's meeting to allow for the. Some public discourse.
Well, right now, you know, you talk about shifting costs, I'm not, right now, they already have a cost.
Sure.
We're giving, to me, we're giving them a cost option that is discounted.
Don't disagree, except that right now, we're talking about like twelve to twenty-four. Issues at the moment, we're not talking about two thousand houses, so. If my meter is working just fine, and my shut off is working just fine. Today, and I have a house that's three years old, so I'm not expecting that I'm gonna have a problem. I'm not sure that if you gave me the option of five hundred today versus eighteen hundred maybe.
Well, you wouldn't be one of the first ones in line for that.
Agreed, I just think.
Yeah.
If we're going to be talking about the possibility of putting that. Forward, I think we're all getting to the same point, none of us wants to make citizens have to pay more for something they don't need. But I think there needs to be a little bit more input from the community, or at least the option.
Wouldn't it make life a lot easier though? Put the smart meters in, I need to shut that off, okay, it's shut off.
It would eliminate a lot of work orders, because Madison could do it right at her, at her computer.
Yeah.
She could shut them right off right there.
I mean, how much, I, I'm not saying we need to put five hundred dollar meter in every house, you know, most I'm saying, if you've got a problem child. Maybe they need a meter, so you can just run on with you. Especially if you, I mean, you guys know which houses we're shutting off.
Yeah, we, we, as you see at the bottom of my report, I put on many doorposts we have, and how many shut offs we can do.
Well, and honestly, at five hundred dollars over the time. The expense that is gonna save you guys having to go around and do things. Is probably gonna pay for itself. Over the long, long haul.
And, and with, with the other part with the five hundred dollar meters, there's, it, it also gives the city some more options. And more, um, cause one of the things that you could do is you could develop the customer portal, or then, you know. The people, if, if they care and want to, you know, they can get an alert on their phone that, hey, you used a lot of water in the last twenty-four hours. And not wait for the alarm to come into city hall that you used a lot of water, you can set it up and you could get that notification, your phone or your email or whatever, however. And then you can, you know, set alarm that if you use over a hundred gallons, or whatever it be in cubic feet. Um, you know, it'll alarm. So there's other benefits, so to speak, to go with the smart meters.
So, I know, I know I would probably go to. The person whose name is on the water would have that option.
Yeah.
What about like landlords? Would they be able to?
I, I don't know if they can set up dual on those.
So the customer portal, I'm not sure exactly how that's gonna go, or how it would ever go, um, the reason this was never brought up. This is back when Rashawn was here, and that, but we didn't have enough meters, and we don't have enough, we. Might have now, but we had to put all the new radio reads in, because that's what talks to the flex system. So we're, we were kind of ahead of the cart with this software, I'm not exactly sure how that would be laid out. Um, that would be on census and their technology, whether or not they could create a login for landlords. So they could potentially see some information, I mean, there's still gonna be some information that they can't see, just because of privacy reasons, but. There may be a re, way to, with census to create a landlord login, so they could potentially look at usage. Of their tenants.
Well, I was just thinking about, I forget how many years ago we had where somebody moved out. And the landlord didn't put it into their name, but then a toilet was running or something, and they got a pretty hefty bill. For that five or ten days in between, because they didn't, they didn't check anything.
Right, and see, that's what the court customer portal would end up being used for, I don't know if anybody has Lion Energy or any Copa Valley that has that app. Um, but it would give you the same readouts, it'd also tell us, because with these new meters, with the eye pearls, it doesn't give us all this information, but with the new ones. If somebody tried to take the meter out, it would tell us, it'll alarm out to Madison, send an alarm, if it had reverse flow, so we lost pressure. If we have a pressure issue, so like around your house, where, where you're on the booster, you're, you know, you're on the booster station. It would tell us, hey, you've got this amount of pressure, you know, two years ago, you guys had issues with pressure over there. That would also be consistent throughout the meters, it'd also tell us the temperature of the water, it tells the temperature of the inside of the house. So if somebody wanted to say, oh, my, my house, it would get that cold, well, actually it did, because the meter froze and broke, here's the data to go along with this. The smart meters have a lot more usability to us, but also to the customer, um. But that hasn't been something that we've ever brought to Jeremiah at all, just because I don't think we're quite there yet. We need to finish out all the radio reads first, because it is going to be a substantial subscription. That the city would have to fund, and I don't know how that would be all set up. Cause originally, I think it was like twenty-one thousand to start for the first year. So, that's why, with saving money being what we need to do, this was not one of those options that has been brought up to Gen. In fact, that we don't have all of our radio reads switched over yet, and I still think we're about five hundred radio reads away. And we've got so many old meters that it's just probably not gonna be well worth, you know, some of the customers using it, because they're not gonna get any information on. And we have SR twos all over in this town, that you're not gonna have any of this information on, so it's not gonna be useful for them. Since we haven't changed meters in twenty years, we have old digital, or not digital, but actual turnstile. Meter tops with mechanical and inwards, so. It's not gonna be a useful tool until we start updating meters. So it'd be, yeah, it'd be useful for everybody that's got a newer home, but anybody on this side of town, certainly a waste.
So Robert, if. If we have a meter go bad, is that when you change them out?
So we've, so since we haven't done any sort of meter change outs in, I don't know how long. Um, so typically, what I've been telling these guy, our guys, um, when we see these meters that are SR twos that have rolled over more than once. Which means, you know, it's all the way over, the very first digit, which is millions of gallons, has rolled over once or twice. We go ahead and make that change, one, as most people might know, a mechanical meter will slow down. It won't speed up, but it will slow down, so in twenty years, if it's been in there that long. You don't know how much the city's actually lost for revenue for water, so that's why the new meters are all. Uh, you know, they're all mag, mag meters, or ultrasonic, or subs, or whatever it is, they're ultrasonic meters. They don't go, they don't go fast, they don't go slow, they're reading accurate for ten to fifteen, twenty years.
And the, and the meters on the city?
Yes, so, because we have to have a change out, I mean, after the, because originally, so when a new home goes in. That home was responsible for very first, is how it is right now. But then it's on the cities, the city to update as we go along, otherwise you can stay with an old SR two for forty years. And gosh knows how, how much money or revenue the city has lost.
So what's the cost difference between the census meters that we have and these smart ones, I mean, what's the price difference?
Uh, so the eye pearls are, I believe, around a hundred and forty-eight to a hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That's the eye pearl, which is not your internal shut off, nothing like that, and the new ally meters are five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Well, that is cost you.
Four hundred and fifty bucks.
So for four hundred and fifty bucks, we also put in that, there, there's that ability to shut that off at any time. Eye pearls don't have that ability.
So I don't need to keep going back to this, but the theme of the evening tonight has been a little bit about budgets. And where we're at in our budgets, right in the brand new, month into, month, six weeks into our twenty twenty-five budget. So let's just say we had ten places right now, that you guys could identify that said, that needs one of the new. Smart meters, as Mr. Dearborn points out, that's our cash register, we should be responsible for. Okay, I'm not against change now, meters, not against the idea of moving forward with technology, but. If my math is correct, that five hundred, you said five hundred and eighty dollars, well, I'm gonna say six hundred, just to be safe.
They're five hundred and eighty.
So for six hundred, that's gonna be over ten thousand dollars right now, just for the ten that you could identify today. Which we currently have on hand. Understood, they're currently paid, well, but let's say you get another ten in the next two months.
Yep, we got money sitting there.
So in our.
For this year.
Yeah.
I, I just, because here's where I'm going with that. At some point, this budget. Is going to be flexed to the, to, to, uh, it's a rubber band, it's gonna get to here, and it's gonna snap.
Yep.
And if we've committed to this, which again, I am not opposed to any of that discussion, or the pits, or anything else. But. We have constituents that expect us to be budgetarily conscious. And so, I just wanna be sure that if you guys are sitting here today telling me that we've got room in our budget. And, and we've got an emergency fund set aside for the compressor that goes out in a building, and we have to put a new air conditioner. Which I think we had something like that happen this last month. I, I wanna be sure before I sign off on something that says, sure, let's get all these meters changed out. And I, granted, I understand it's not gonna be, we're not gonna have two thousand houses done by tomorrow, but five years from now. If we are building that in, I wanna make sure that our budget's moving forward. Account for that, and that five hundred and eighty dollars, the budget better account for it being six hundred and eighty dollars in two years and. Eight hundred dollars in three years, so, that's where I'm coming from, I am not opposed to change, I'm not opposed to bringing. Up to new technology, I am opposed to borrowing today without knowing that we have the money to cover. That's, that's why.
Kinda come full circle in this, cause I, I mean, in the grand scheme of talking budgeting, cause this is something, I mean, we've been. Um, dealing with now for a while, couple of years at least. Um, and that was, I mean, we've kind of been working towards, or we're working towards getting the newer smart meters in. And it was only recently that we shied away from that, because. The price tag, um, we had to look at saving some money, um, and we contacted Census and. Um, they explained that it would be great for multi-residential housing and things like that, it would make sense. But to put them in every household, if we're paying the bill for that, um, it's going to stretch our budgets. Um, and so we just kinda backed away from that for those reasons.
I'm just familiar with, I've been on the council now for roughly eight months, seven and a half. And from the jump in January, we got. We, we had certain things that we had no control, insurance costs, we don't have any control over, we have to pay it because we have to have insurance. We all were aware that, for whatever reason, over the course of time. Several council, as Rich, I think he said, there's been lots of. Thought processes on this council, lots of thought processes on that council, but at the end of the day. Right now, this council is the one that has to be aware of, we have a certain limit on our borrowing power. And if our budget doesn't account for these things, we're doing no better. We're not fixing the problem, or we're not fixing the issues that have gotten us to where we're at today, where we're having to be concerned. About where the budget is, and where we need to be in five years.
Well, we've had quite a bit of discussion on curb stop. Meters this evening. Unfortunately, there is just no easy button to push on this. Uh, I anticipate more conversation and discussion in the future. The, the smart meters, by the time we get half of this town. Upgraded, there is no doubt in my mind, they'll be the next latest and greatest, that we'll be looking at that. Uh, so, I. I would suggest we cautiously implement those types of plans. And we certainly figure out, you know, a five year, even a ten year to. Convert that over. Uh, financial. The ramifications that will become of it. Taking it from this new smart meter, if we could click our heels, snap our fingers, and have town updated to all of them. We still got this curb stop sitting out there, and, you know, we, we. Granted, you got the smart meter to shut it off at the house, you got this line that could still, something could happen, and. You get the weeping, oozing of water. You get the weeping, oozing of water. I, I don't know how we get away from not having that secondary shut off. So, because again, that would be now all un-metered water.
Well, it already is un-metered water.
Yes, it, it is. Uh, so. I don't, I don't know. There's got to be some more in-depth discussion about curb stops and. Who's responsible, uh, who, who puts the wrench on them if something happens to it at that point? I, I can relate to what Brooke is saying. If it's, if it's mine, I'm responsible for what happens to it. You leave your fingers off of it until you actually make contact with me. Uh, otherwise I'll expect you to come into my garage too and, and fix my light switches and everything else that I own. You, if you see what I'm saying there. Well, I wish I had some answers. Unfortunately, I don't. I think that. If we rang the phone number of every community within a hundred and fifty mile radius, there'd be like. Don't mention your problems to our people because we have the same problem.
What are you looking for, Jeremiah? You created the.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, I guess at this point, uh. It clearly, I, I want some direction from the council. My intent, this memo and those improvements that I submitted, they're not going away. They're here. To stay either way. Um, so we'll continue with that. Um, and if the council wants me to explore some other. More detailed options for. Uh, addressing the curb stop, I guess I'll keep just seeing if I can come up with something. Bring some more information back.
Could you maybe get us some samples of other communities ordinances?
Sure.
And how they address it?
Yep.
So we can, you know, maybe get a variety, get jumping on or jumping off. I mean, we don't necessarily need to recreate the will, but if we can look at somebody else's will and. Couple, like I said, a couple of different varieties, take some that where the city maintains the curb stop, some that the city does. And. Let's take a look at some of those options.
We can't be the only town going through this.
Well, there's no doubt, we're not. But, you know, it's, this is one of them, stick your head in the sand.
Exactly.
Wait for the problem to surface and address it on a individual basis. But I, I do want to take this opportunity, Jeremiah. I appreciate you changing, uh, the operating procedures the way you, you have outlined. In, uh, in what you provided to council. I, I definitely think that's a step in, in a positive, in the right direction. So. Kudos for you for initiating that.
And I like the additional thirty-day period. I think that. Might alleviate some of the problems that you had deal with, uh, one property, property that you.
Especially doing the sort of. Because that way you've got proof that somebody received it. And also I will give you kudos for having interaction with that person because that's just, I guess, part of being a city manager, but. It's just good practice.
Yep. We, uh, we had several meetings, like I said, about it to come up with those. Um. And that, that memo was kind of the end result of that. So I'll keep digging and we'll come up with some more.
Thanks, Robert and Steve, for the information on the other options.
Was it sits in seven point nine will be an open action item. Uh, before I move off, does the public have any other, uh, comments or input they'd like to? Provide. Seven point ten, review and approve application of Austin Bible Leble to join the animals volunteer fire department.
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment. Kaylee?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried seven point eleven, review and approve application of Brandon McMahon to join the animals volunteer fire department.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment. Kaylee?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried seven point twelve, review and approve application of Lane Williams to join the animals volunteer fire department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Todd. Council discussion. Public comment. Kaylee, please.
Fire.
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried. Dan, does this bring you to full staff?
Right now we have twenty-six on the roster. This will bring us up to twenty-nine. We have up to thirty-five.
You can go up to thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
What do you consider that threshold for? Public safety?
I was happy to have twenty-six, happy to have twenty-nine. So I guess I'm not going to be. These last three, I think would be great just to add on coming toward the, it's not really the end of the year yet, but looking toward the end of the year. Uh, we got someone else that wants to join, we'll take them on, but I think we're at a good spot. I think we had six probationary, probationary firefighters right now. So we got our hands full for a little bit.
So for the public and anyone that would ha- have interest, you're still.
We'll still take them. So.
All right. Thank you, sir. Seven point thirteen, review and approve consent agenda pay request totaling seventy thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, seventy-two cents. Uh, again, I will read all the items listed. Uh, council can make a motion, uh. That includes consent, which would bring all of the items up for a, a vote. Or they can make a motion on any of the individual agenda items. Item A from HR Green and the amount of eight hundred dollars for the water treatment plant disinfection system CPS project. Item B from HR Green and the amount of one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the third street sidewalk extension project. Item C, HR Green and the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars for the sidewalk program. HR Green and the amount of two thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, twenty-four cents for civil plan reviewed Northland subdivision. From HR Green and the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents for the Dillon Military Bridge Project. Item F from HR Green and the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and four dollars, eighty-one cents for engineering services master service agreement. Item G from HR Green and the amount of seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for Water Department GIS services. Item H from Boomerang Corporation and the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the Old Dubuque Road Extension and Roundabout Project final.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay, uh, for consent agenda. So at this point, council, all items will go up for the vote. Uh, so all items are up for discussion.
I have a general question about multimillion dollar contracts that we. Put out for bid. Is there some type of rule of thumb for those of you that are contractors? That. When we approve a low bid as a council, do we have, I guess, for lack of a better term, a budget factor for. Change orders that would amount to almost seven percent of the contract or the bid price?
Well, technically, that's not the low bid in, in many cases.
Okay, the bid that's been approved.
There, there shouldn't, if you're, if you're bidding this project correctly, there shouldn't be change orders in the beginning.
I just, I'm not going to hold up the approval of the consent agenda, but I think. I have questions about, and this was something that was. These change orders were approved before I got on the council, but. I think if I had a seven percent change in my contract price for my house, I'd be talking to a contractor. Uh, particularly on the multimillion dollar project, that's a pretty good. That's not the bid that I agreed on. If, if I approved a bid for three million dollars. And all of a sudden I've got a bill, a final bill that includes seven percent more on top of that, that's not what I. Contracted for. And I have to believe that some of this stuff that gets. Changed mid-project should have been stuff that either should have been anticipated or should have gone through. At minimum, the city administrator or the council before those change orders were approved because. We, we paid them. I just question whether or not we have been paying a lot of attention to how much over the actual bid price. We've, we've agreed to pay, but that's my question.
Well, I, I can tell you that on some of those bid, bidding processes, they always do factor in a contingency.
Understood.
Um, and so that contingencies should take care of some of the change orders. Um, you know, to answer your question, you said about your house, seven percent. I know when I was doing real estate construction loans, we always factored in ten percent.
As long as there's a rule of thumb that council is aware. I just, I'm new to this process.
And, and I think they, they generally did factor in a contingency of about ten percent. Maybe, maybe not quite ten, but there was always a contingency factor factored in.
That, that's just something that I, I knew councilman, I'm going to be looking at when we do contracts because I, that's.
And I do believe if I'm correct, that the mayor brought this up on a couple of projects not too long ago.
I'll bet, I, I, I would like to venture to say that this number is nowhere near the end number when it's finished.
I, I just am bringing it up because I'm a new guy and this, and I'm not afraid to ask dumb questions.
I know. I'm just, there's one constant here and it's, it's just that.
What, what item are we referencing? Speaking of dumb questions, I'm the.
Just, just bid, bid numbers.
Oh.
And, and the change order.
Well, Rich, all of you bring up a valid point and I never give it any thought until now is. All these projects have contingencies in them. So when they come with the change orders, change orders happen when the scope of the project changes. Or what's under that first inches, inch of dirt is now determined, is not satisfactory for the structure that's going to be there. Uh, have we all, have we ever questioned? Is that, is our contingency used up? What percent of the contingency is exhausted? Now that you're asking for a change order? Or have we always just kind of gave them pennies from heaven? And accepted the change orders as well. Shame on me for only thinking now.
And, and I'm just. I'm, I'm not intending to call anybody out other than the one that I'm looking at. There were. With six change order. And so I can conceive of a situation where. We're two months into a project and all of a sudden we get change order number one for ten thousand dollars. And I'm probably, probably, I know I'm probably guilty of looking at it going, okay, ten thousand dollars, sure. And then three months later, okay, I've got a change order now that's forty-five thousand dollars. And it seems legit. I wouldn't know whether I need three inch base or six inch base or twenty-two inch this or that. And rather than going back and looking, okay, three months ago, we did ten thousand dollar change order. Now we're done, we've done a forty-five thousand. So now we're fifty-five thousand dollars into a change order. So. I understand how we get to a point where there's been six different ones, but they've not all been at the same time. So we're not. In the moment of approving them, not looking at the accumulation of them, we're simply looking at one. Piece of it at a time. And I'm not saying change orders shouldn't occur. I just, um, I wanted to be sure that if there's some kind of rule of thumb and if it's built in as a contingency, that's fine. But I do think that. On these large scale projects, seven percent to ten percent is a pretty significant chunk of change. And if we're trying to keep an eye on budget and we. Are asking our staff to keep an eye on budget. I know I need to do a better job of looking at change orders in the collective and not in, in the individual.
And could that be part of a request to an engineer that as those change orders come into play? We have a running total and we're aware of that. I'm not saying nobody did anything wrong. But also be a way for you to track it and maybe a better handle on the council to track it.
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm glad you brought that up and all the points are duly noted. I would echo the same sentiment. I know. You know, just the last couple of years has been a, a bit of a whirlwind for everybody. Um, but that one has been one thing we've discussed at city hall is. Um, uh, it's kind of hard to explain, but as we're looking through the projects and these lengthy processes that take time. Uh, there's sometimes miscommunications or, I mean, I throw all sorts of numbers at council. Uh, and you don't see another bill from this contractor or engineer, whatever, for two months and, um, it's hard. I, I think we compartmentalize it to that council meeting and don't see the bigger picture. So I think that's somewhere I think we can improve on. Uh, at the city, uh, at city hall of getting that bigger picture together and maybe sharing that information more clearly.
I was thinking that some of, some of the providers, when they give their, their sheet, because they have line items. Will have a, a change order line item along with the, the main item of here's what we budgeted. Here's a change order totals. So I think some of the providers do in the master sheet. Um, have that information. Because I know on a couple of these projects, we've had some negative change or orders too.
Like I said, I'm not saying they shouldn't have occurred. I just. Trying to keep an eye on the bottom line. I'm just. Said, I'm not afraid to ask a dumb question because. Well, I don't care if anybody is upset about.
And, and I know all of the change orders were ninety-nine percent of them. The engineer has said, yes, this needs to be done. So it, it kind of fell in line like, well, if they say it needs to be done, because they should be looking out for our side of things too, but. You know, it adds to their pocket too.
Sure. And not being critical of past decisions, just one best.
I, I just think moving forward, it should go to the city manager. To look at and then if the city council has to be involved and that's your call. But I think we should be a little more, I guess, streamlined. And I'm not picking on anybody either. I'm just saying we can do things better. But low bid is not always low bid.
So, oh, I think we have in the past eliminated some low bids because. The individual or companies in the past didn't perform like they said they were going to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a lot of it right there. Just as.
Performance.
Things get overlooked and, oh, we forgot this. We didn't forget it. You forgot it.
Or you didn't, didn't matter, maybe necessarily forget it, but you didn't bring it to the attention at the time to put it into the bid.
Those are all the questions. Any, anyone else have a discussion on the? Those are all the questions I have. Any, anyone else have a discussion on the agenda items? Public have any comment? Kaylee, please conduct a roll vote.
Yes.
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 Uh, motion for consent approval carried. Eight point zero, city administrators report.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Does council have anything for Jeremiah? Nine point zero, mayor and council reports. Nine point one, mayor's report. I do not have anything this evening. Nine point two, council reports. Ten point zero, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Police chief's aware, yes. Um, you don't need to get up. I just wanted to make sure you were here. I had the occasion to attend the community night out or whatever we called it last Thursday night. Um, it's been kind of a long meeting tonight and maybe difficult, but I do want to credit all of our local law enforcement and other agencies that appeared at that meeting or at that town event last Thursday. It was a beautiful night out. Very well attended as far as I could tell, and I think nearly, you know, all of the local law enforcement, emergency personnel, I think, fire trucks sitting. I know the fire trucks were there, um, and I think they were the ones that were getting the most visits other than Tyler Brownley's, uh, door battering, S T V, all the kids wanted to climb up in that. But I just wanted to thank the law enforcement folks and fire department, I guess, safety folks for being there, cuz, um, I think it's important to maybe recognize when something good like that happens.
The one else? Eleven point zero, German, this evening's meeting is. Thanks, everyone, for sticking in there.